Okay, hello everybody. I will be calling the Monday, June 23rd, 2025 Planning Commission meeting to order here at 6:30 PM. So there's a lot of different ways that the public can participate in this meeting. One is in person in the council chambers here with us. You can also watch the meeting online at the city website, which is BurnsvilleMN.gov/Meetings. You can also view us on Comcast, Channel 16 or Channel 859. And lastly, you can also join us by going to zoom.us/join. And the information on how to do that is available on our meetings webpage and in the agenda, which is posted online. So we'll get our meeting started. The first item is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda from commissioners? Seeing none, are there any changes from staff?
Nope.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Motion.
Motioned by Commissioner Braddock, seconded by Commissioner-
Second, yep.
Yes, seconded by Commissioner John. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our second item, this is the approval of our minutes from our last meeting, which was April 14th, 2025. Any changes from commissioners? Any changes from staff? Minutes, okay. Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our April 14th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, this will be our first public hearing tonight. This is the application of Ivy Brook Parking LLC for a CUP and concept development stage PUD for an outdoor storage lot use, preliminary and final plat for a one lot commercial plat of Ivy Brook Parking, County Road 5, located at 1900 Highway 13 West. Presenting is Connor Jakes, our associate planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, commissioners. The item before you is an application from Ivy Brook Parking for a CUP, a PUD, and preliminary and final plat. The subject site is shown on screen before you. The site is Zoned B4, Highway Commercial, and is located within the Gateway Overlay District. And the site is guided MRQ or Mississippi River Quadrant in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And I will note, the sites surrounding are also zoned and guided the same as the subject site before you. Located directly to the west of the site is County Road 5. To the south is a frontage road. To the north is a vacant site currently. And to the east are two businesses, a towing business and a U-Haul truck rental business. Little background and history on the site. Residential house and structures were on-site by 1964. That was removed by 1979. And then in the 1980s, the Assaford 126th Street demolition dump operated throughout the 1980s, and then final cover was placed in 1988. And a fun fact is that the Met Stadium concrete is actually located there, I guess still, probably, I assume. Following that, the next big item was the Highway 13 and County Road 5 interchange project, which occurred in 2013 and 2014. And then after that, that was a partnership between the city, the county, and the state. After that was completed, Dakota County actually took ownership of the parcels before you. And then in 2022, completed a Phase 1, Phase 2 environmental assessment, kind of premature for tax forfeiture, which occurred recently, which is how the applicant purchased the property. And then within that site assessment, related to the environmentals, there is contamination on-site. However, the only use without remediating the soils would be a surface parking lot, which is proposed, so just to note that history. And that was related to the dump in the 80s. So the proposal before you is a preliminary and final plat to combine the two lots into one commercial lot, conditional use permit for the outdoor storage lot use. The applicant is proposing the storage of commercial, recreation, and passenger vehicles, and then equipment and light materials. The applicant does have four other sites throughout the city where it's the same use that's proposed as this evening. And finally, the applicant is also proposing a concept and development stage planned unit development. And the two flexibilities are for light pole height and screening along the east side of the property. So conditional use permit is required for the outdoor storage use. The intent of requiring it is really to ensure it's compatible with the surrounding uses, which in this case it is, given there's a towing business which stores vehicles and then the U-Haul site, which also stores and rents vehicles. In addition, the applicant is proposing to provide substantial screening with the vinyl maintenance free fence. That is a higher standard than our typical kind of chain link with slats or chain link with fabric fence. In addition, there's multiple conditions related to the use to ensure it's well-kept. One of those is that materials should not exceed the height of the fence. And then the other ones are that all vehicles shall be stored in an operable condition with no overnight uninhabiting or no staying in the semi trucks overnight, just from a safety perspective, and to minimize any adverse impacts. As I mentioned previously, the applicant is requesting two points of flexibility. The first is the parking lot light pole height. Per the zoning code, parking lots, light poles are considered an accessory structure, so can't exceed the height of the principal structure. In this case, the proposed structure is 13 feet in height, so not quite practical for parking lot light poles. The applicant's proposing two poles that are 30 feet in height, which is the same as the other sites that the applicant has approvals for. The second flexibility point is to not install screening along the eastern side of the property, along that property line. The U-Haul used to the east actually has a large retaining wall that's within 20 feet of the property line. And then to the southeast is a towing business that screens from the frontage road. The only point of potential visibility would be traveling westbound on the road to the north, but that sightline is very limited. The applicant has provided the PUD benefits that are listed on screen before you. Again, that higher standard fence, the planting of 16 trees when only four are required by code, the building to be a stick-built construction rather than a modular, so a higher standard of construction there, planning of the site, and then the use that aligns with the zoning code, and is one of the few uses that would be allowed with the soil contamination. And then there is a large electric transmission line easement over the northern, almost half of the parcel, that limits use and structures that can be built on that location. So the site plan is shown on screen before you. The applicant is proposing a total of 57 parking stalls, 140 are required. Forty-eight stalls are proposed for semi truck and trailer parking, seven stalls for Bobtail or trailer parking, and then two for passenger vehicles next to the proposed structure. The access is proposed in the southeast part of the site along the frontage road. The applicant originally proposed the access up of County Road 5, but due to Dakota County spacing guidelines and just the traffic volumes of County Road 5, the access on screen was the elective one because of those reasons with the lower traffic flow. And then that access is proposed to be quite wide at 60 feet in width. The intent there is to allow trucks to enter and exit the site with a trailer, so it doesn't cause a traffic blockage on the road. Retaining walls are proposed. There's two different types. A large block retaining wall is proposed along that entrance drive and then the southeast corner of the site. Then the northeast corner has a boulder retaining wall that's proposed. The fence does surround the southwest and north sides of the property. Again, that's that six-foot maintenance-free vinyl fence. And then the building is proposed in the southwest corner. That's 240 square feet, will consist of an office, a mechanical room, and then a bathroom for employees. The structure does meet architecture standards. It is within the gateway, so there's stricter standards on materials and percentage requirements. It does meet those, has the very rough line contrasting and complementary materials that the gateway overlay really intends for. And then again, it's proposed to be stick-built rather than modular construction. The landscape plan is on screen before you. It does meet all applicable requirements and standards for the code. Again, the applicant is proposing 16 trees when four are required. Those trees are proposed to be planted outside the fence to really provide a visual breakup instead of just looking at the fence as you're traveling along. And then the last thing that I wanted to note was related to tree preservation. There's a section in the staff report on that. But tree removal did occur before the development application was submitted and prior to a woodland evaluation worksheet being submitted. So in consulting the city attorney, it is technically considered a zoning violation on-site. However, through this development application and the planned unit development benefits and approvals, it would rectify that zoning violation, remove it, and allow the application to continue to permits and move forward. In terms of planning considerations, it does meet the requirements of the city code and the findings for approval of a conditional use permit, which were noted in the report. Meets the intent of the zoning district in the comprehensive plan. Again, the proposed use is one of the few ones that would be allowed to occupy the site, given the constraints, and the applicant is proposing PUD benefits that outweigh or equal the requested flexibilities. With that, staff does recommend that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the conditional use permit to allow a new outdoor storage lot, approval of the concept and development stage PUD, and approval of the preliminary and final plat, subject to 13 conditions of approval. The first condition, prior to the release of the final plat for recording, the applicant shall pay applicable development fees, including but not limited to topo mapping and storm sewer obligations. Second condition, the site shall be platted with the Dakota County Recorder's Office prior to the issuance of any building permits. Third condition, all applicable permits and a commercial plan review packet shall be completed, submitted, and approved by the city prior to the commencement of onsite activities. Applicable permits required shall include those required of third-party agencies such as MINDOT. Condition four, prior to the issuance of the building permit, all outstanding items from the June 12th, 2025 City Engineer Review Memo shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the city engineer. Condition five, prior to the issuance of a building permit, written permission from Excel Energy or NSP shall be provided, granting permission for proposed improvements within their easements. Condition six, prior to the issuance of a building permit, final landscape plan shall be approved by planning staff. The applicant shall provide the appropriate landscape security pursuant to City Code Title 1030A4. Condition seven, materials approved for storage at the site are limited to commercial vehicles, recreation vehicles, equipment, and light materials. Condition eight, the equipment and materials stored at the site shall not exceed the height of the screening fence. Condition nine, all vehicles stored on-site shall be in operable condition with up-to-date tabs and registration. Condition 10, no person shall inhabit any vehicle on-site, including inhabiting the vehicle overnight. Condition 11, a signed permit shall be obtained prior to installation of site signage. No sign shall be located within Drainage and Utility easements. Condition 12, written permission shall be provided from the Utility easement holder if a sign is proposed to be located within their easement. And 13, the applicant shall maintain the green space at the edge of curb on the frontage road to the south and to the adjacent edge of trail along County Road 5. With that, the recommendation is on screen before you. The applicant is in attendance as well for questions.
Thank you for that great presentation. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner John?
Yeah, I was curious if we know exactly where the material that is, the garbage, the waste, where is that located on the site?
Yes, Mr. Chair, commissioners, Commissioner John, it's actually throughout the site and including that parcel to the north as well. Back when the dump was operating, it was actually the three parcels, so it's actually dispersed throughout that site.
Where the building is located, is that a part of that? Or is that going to be, I mean, is it, we're digging in?
Yeah, it's a good question. I don't believe so. I might, the applicant might be able to speak better to that as well if they did soil tests, but I don't believe that's an area of concern, given its kind of proximity to the roads as well.
Commissioner Hamilton?
So, since it's on top of the dump, what about drainage from rain and snow? Is that going to impact the dump site at all?
Yeah, Commissioner Hamilton, from staff review, engineering, there were no concerns or comments from the city's consultant or engineering staff. This site is actually part of a regional, I guess, stormwater capture area, and so there basically be the drainage from the stormwater basins that would flow into the pondage to the north, so we don't believe that there would be any concerns with the materials that are underground.
So, to tie in with that, so I was over at the site today, if I had the right location, and there is a retention pond to the north, if I was in the right area. Now, is that retention pond going to remain if I was in the right area?
Yeah, Commissioner Hamilton, I don't believe there's one on the site itself. It might be the parcel to the north.
It's to the north.
Okay.
Okay.
Looks like it's behind the U-Haul.
Yeah, I believe it's in the north to the west, or east.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Northeast.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, I believe the current intent is for that pond to remain there.
Okay.
I have a question. What are light materials?
Mr. Chair, that's a good question. I would defer to the applicant on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can, we'll cross that, if you want to get to it. Another question, real quick. What is, is there anything, do anything about the parcel to the north, which is kind of in a similar condition as this parcel? Has that been, was that sold in tax forfeiture as well?
Yep, Mr. Chair, that's correct. Yep. The same auction, actually, that parcel sold, and it's actually, the same PID is tied in with the parcel across the County Road 5 to the west, so it's an interesting parcel and interesting history.
Okay. And there's no real insight what's really being planned for that yet?
No, not at this time. Different owner as well.
Yeah, very good. Commissioner Timmerman?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have a number of questions, and maybe you'll be able to answer some, maybe the applicant will be able to answer some, but I get the impression that there's additional information that the planning commission might need before they make a decision, because with the packet, there's not specific detail about the soil contamination. I'm concerned that, we don't know what kind of material is there specifically, we don't know what type of contaminants are in the soil. As a part of the presentation, we don't know if the tax forfeiture was related to the previous owner having the inability of developing this land because of contaminated soil. On the surface, I read this as, I won't say my commentary, maybe I'll save that for later, but I do feel like there's more information that we need. I think that this is another example, unfortunately, of Bloomington bringing their debris, their garbage, their waste to Burnsville. I mean, that's what we're seeing. It's the Lindale Bridge, it's the Met Stadium, it's, I don't see how any of that is light debris. So of those ramblings, do you have any insight into those concerns?
Yeah, Commissioner Timmerman, I can speak a little bit to that. I apologize if those reports weren't attached, the environmental assessments, but the majority of materials were concrete waste debris from those type of infrastructure projects. And then the contamination was like specific chemicals, I guess. And I don't know the specifics of that, but that was what was contaminating the soil. And from those reports, it basically outputted conditions for remediation, and it allowed for a surface parking lot, given, you know, you don't have to dig to the depth of, you know, footings for a large building or something of the like that the parcel would allow for, you know, given it's kind of industrial in nature. So that's why a surface parking lot is the only use allowed. The most recent owner was Dakota County, actually, and they owned it possibly prior to the interchange project, took ownership. At that point, I've owned it since at least 2013 when that project was conducted, and then completed the environmental assessments as part of the tax forfeiture process in order to auction that parcel up. And so that's why development hasn't occurred yet to this point. But from that environmental assessment, it was, the only use would be a surface parking lot.
Chair, could I just follow up with one final question? So help me out, I know you spoke to this a little bit, but why a planned unit development? I feel like that tool in this case is a little odd.
Yeah, Commissioner Timmerman, really relates to the light pole height, which is something we're agreeing with the zoning code update to negate the need to, you know, have a planned unit development to allow for taller light poles. And then for that screening, just to provide that flexibility, given there's already screening on-site. But the main intent was really to allow those taller light poles to be on-site, which was consistent with the previous approvals for the applicant's other uses.
There was no ability to use a variance in this case?
It was reviewed, but practical difficulty and hardship. It didn't quite meet the test of that. And in return, you know, the benefits were listed, and we thought that planned unit development would be more effective in ensuring the parcel would exceed the gateway standards, given it's in a prominent corner location within, really, the gateway area to this part of the city. And so we utilized that PUD to ensure things like the higher-quality fence, the materials on the building, and more trees.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hamilton?
Back to the dump. So, when was the dump covered?
1988, Commissioner.
When?
1988.
Okay. So it's been a while. Okay. And then, how far down before anyone would hit the cover if you're moving dirt?
Commissioner Hamilton, I would have to follow up with that information. I don't know off the top of my head, to be honest.
Does the MPCA ever study the effects?
Yep, yeah, Commissioner Hamilton. So when the county actually completed those Phase 1 and Phase 2 assessments, there's, I think, like 100 pages of soil borings and soil information that don't have readily available, but they would have communicated that information with the MPCA and notified them as well through those submittals, given, one, government agencies, but two, part of the process for that tax forfeiture.
Does the MPCA have an issue with this?
We haven't received comments from them, just MINDOT for outside agencies.
Commissioner John?
So it looks like, from the site, it looks like the actual parking lot is below the surface level of the street, Highway 5, 126 there. Is there any more digging to be done? Are we talking about putting any blacktop down or soil, black soil, anything in those lines? Is that a ramp down in there from the image that we see?
Yeah, Commissioner John, that's correct. It would be a sort of a ramp down to the parking lot, and it wouldn't be visible from the adjacent roadways. I would defer to the applicant and his engineer maybe to the extent of grading that would have to occur, site removal, but yeah, that is the intent.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Is there any, on the east side where there's not going to be a fence, is there anything to prevent people from coming onto the property?
Yeah, Commissioner, not specifically, but given the distance from the adjacent roadways and the fact that the retaining wall is quite tall and that gray change, to get down into the parking lot, it would be quite prohibitive for people to access, I would say. The applicant is also proposing security measures, cameras, to ensure site safety.
Maybe we'll move this to the public hearing portion of the, of this hearing, unless anybody has any other specific questions for, for Mr. Jakes. Okay, so I will open up the public hearing here at 6:52. I was informed that there's nobody on Zoom for this. If there's anybody in the council chambers that would like to speak to this matter, you're welcome to approach the podium at this time. And nobody's really rushing up here. Can you remind me, if we're going to ask the applicant to speak, we do that during the public hearing section?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And I'm sensing people have questions for the applicant, so if the applicant's here, if you don't mind approaching the podium and telling us your name and your address for the public record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Trevor Panai from Ivy Brook Parking. Address is 14198 McKenna Road Northwest in Prior Lake. Been here a few times before for some, you know, previous projects, so I recognize most of you. And Kyra, I believe you worked in New Prague?
Yeah.
Yeah, with Ken Hondis, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Gotcha. So, yeah, happy to address any questions. Connor did a great job of explaining the project. You know, I can start off a little bit with the dump. It was actually primarily concentrated in the north part, the parcels I don't own. That parcel has like three sections to it, right above my parcel, and then north of Burnsville Motors, and a little triangle piece somewhere else. And when they did the soil borings, they actually didn't find anything besides, I believe, one or two borings. They found a chemical just a little higher in the soil, but when they dug down, they didn't find any debris or, you know, anything major. However, they did find it on the other parcels, so that's why I went ahead and, you know, did purchase and moved forward with the purchase. You know, I don't really want to deal with a major contamination or dump because that gets costly to remediate. So the reason I went move forward with this is, you know, the chemical is a little high on this, and perhaps that's why it's still, you know, best used for a parking lot for precaution, but in terms of, you know, major dumping or anything, based on my analysis of the Phase 1 and the Phase 2, there wasn't any major concern with these bottom two parcels, you know, and Major Nera, you know, could probably confirm as well. In terms of water treatment, all the water is going to run off to the regional pond. Forgot what it's called, Connor. It's north of the frontage road, but it's, everything's going to be stubbed into the pond, and we're not going to do any major, you know, digging below the gray level. Actually has to be lifted a little bit. So Commissioner, you mentioned something like, you know, how far are we going to dig down and whatnot, or, you know, how far are we going to dig down to tamper that cover? So I don't think we're going to reach that. It's going to be like 10 inches of Class 5, 6 inches of paving, and typically what we do, we skim off the black dirt, you know, it's like 6 inches of black dirt, and then go ahead with the Class 5 and whatnot. And some areas of the parking lot do have to be built up, especially with the ramp portion of the parking lot. All the water should skim off from the pavement itself, so environmentally, I don't see any major concerns from my analysis of the project. And what are the questions that you guys have?
Yeah, any other questions for the applicant from commissioners?
Oh, the screening. I think one commissioner mentioned the screening part. For my, it's a different model, but I typically even leave my parking lots open just because they're trafficing and out, even though it's minimal. The gates, you know, talking to other parking lot owners and whatnot, if somebody's going to get it, they're going to get it. You know, they typically share codes with the gates and whatnot. Sometimes they don't work, and when you have a big winter storm, like, you know, how we sometimes do at the worst times, the gates don't open, it just, it becomes kind of chaos. So my method is, I have cameras everywhere, and I can access it right from my phone for every single lot. I can see everything, you know, that goes on, I can set up alerts and whatnot. So that's, you know, my more mentality, if somebody's going to try to steal or get it, you know, we haven't had that issue, you know, thankfully at our parking lots, but, um, yeah, it's, that's typically my method.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Commissioner John, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Panai. First, I want to say that I drove by all your lots, and I am very much impressed at how clean they're kept.
Thank you.
It's very impressive, and it's been definitely an asset to Burnsville, and don't take any of these questionings as far as, you're a very welcome customer or resident.
Thank you, I appreciate that, yeah.
Really appreciate what you've done, and you've taken a lot of the semis off the side of streets and side roads. Not all of them, we're getting there.
Not all of them, we're getting there.
We're getting there, we're getting there.
I took some pictures, they're still, they're still light up.
Thus, this PUD, right?
Me and my family are cleaning, we're literally there once a week cleaning all the parking lots, you know what I mean? We want to maintain that image and, you know, keep the community clean.
Certainly can tell, absolutely. Much more clean than I'd ever even expect, or well above the minimum. Do you know, is the reason for that building on the south end as it is because of the dump? Or is it just location based on where you thought it was?
A couple of reasons. The utility easement, the power lines, actually encumber most of the property on the north end. You can't build under, you can't do anything under those power lines besides pave it. And then the utilities are more stubbed into the southern end. And we had the entrance previously on the western end on the front, on County Road 5, but after talking to Dakota County, they wanted on the southern, you know, the frontage road, so it made more sense to have the business, the building more concentrated towards, you know, the entrance, you know, for security purposes and whatnot.
Sure.
And then also utilities are stubbed right to the road, so for, I guess, simplicity of hooking it up and, you know, access.
And the building, the purpose of the building mainly is a restroom, is that right? Or?
It's more just for an office, you know, it could be a dispatch office, I could rent out to one of my tenants, I could use it myself, you know, like my other ones, but I know the code typically requires a principal structure, so, you know.
Thank you.
No other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, thanks.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll close the public hearing here at 6:59. Any discussion or comments or motions from the commissioners? Commissioner Timmerman? I will reiterate that, I think, without seeing the environmental impact statement or whatever the contamination, I trust the applicant. I think that, as Commissioner John said, you know, we've had good experience working with you in the past, but I do think approving this may be a little premature with that. Can you go to the screen with the next screen? Are there any contingencies listed that are related to the soil contamination?
Are there any contingencies listed that are related to the soil contamination? Not specifically. Commissioner Timmerman?
Okay. I mean, maybe there's a way around it where, well, and maybe you can answer this. Has the city engineer looked at those soil samples? The city engineer, basically by saying they have no concerns, that means they've looked at it, they've considered it, and they have no concerns?
Yeah, Commissioner Timmerman, that's correct. The city engineer reviewed it and actually had conversations directly with Dakota County about these Phase One and Phase Two environmental assessments. And then in addition, Bolton and Mink actually does our, I guess, engineering plan reviews as well. So there's that layer of maybe protection, I guess I would say, just to verify everything and provide those detailed comments. The other thing is, with Condition Three here, where it says all applicable permits, we could also include anything else related to the environmental, should something come up. You know, thinking along the lines of like MPCA, if they have requirements, it would be permitted through them, things of the like. When the building permit comes in, it can verify the environmental, should anything come up. So it somewhat covers.
I mean, that is, I have no expertise in reading a soil report. So, I mean, that is sufficient to me, is knowing that the engineers have reviewed it and they've signed off on it, so thank you.
If I can add to commissioners, I have the report up now, and going forward, we'll include this report, and all that little detail. But the applicant is correct. Most of, they did do soil pits in two thousand twenty-two onsite as part of the due diligence. And the debris that was found onsite is on the northern part of the parcel, underneath the power lines. As when they did this due diligence, they did do test pits on the other side of the road, on the, there's to be a gas station there, I believe. They did find some contaminants there associated with the fuel station. And they were, and the MPCA was involved in cleaning up and closing some cases on those sites right around that two thousand two era, I think it was in here. But all the contaminants materials were found on test pits that were closer to the other frontage, the other road behind the exception parcel. So, but going forward, we'll include that information. I think it's very beneficial that you guys be able to see that as well, so you can understand what we're looking at. And I think Connor did an excellent job explaining that we had multiple experts look at this as part of the review process.
Great, thanks. Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Any further comments or a motion? Commissioner John?
I really am glad that we're doing this as far as a parking lot, right? About the only thing that can go there, as they had pointed out in the fact that, that the, we're underneath the power lines again. That's where Mr. Punai seems to really thrive in our city here. But, you know, it works, right? It's using our land the best of the abilities. I do had, I had hesitation, like Commissioner Timmerman, as far as, you know, what kind of waste, what kind of contaminants that we have. Commissioner Hamilton, thank you for bringing that up as well. With that, I will go ahead and make a recommendation that City Council approve the CUP to allow a new outdoor storage lot, approval of concept and development stage PUD, and approval of the preliminary and final plat subject to the thirteen conditions read earlier by Mr. Jakes.
So there's a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motioned and seconded. We'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. And so this will be presented to the City Council on July, is that correct? July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five?
That's correct.
Okay. Seems like it weighs off, but that's the, that's when this will be, before the City Council. Thank you. We'll move on to our next agenda item. This is a public hearing. This is the application of the City of Burnsville for an amendment to the City Code Title Ten, Chapter Seven, Section Fifty, Auto Dealership Remote Storage of the City Code. And presenting will be Mr. Maroslaw, our Planning Manager. I was trying to talk really slow. But the floor is yours, Mr. Maroslaw.
All right. A little background on this ordinance section. The ordinance was adopted in October sixth of two thousand fifteen. The intent of the ordinance is to allow local dealerships to store new vehicles at sites that are not, are underutilized, such as like Virgil Center and other properties. The property where the mall is currently located at, it was Zone B three in the surrounding area as well. However, in two thousand twenty, the area was rezoned to mixed use. But it appears that City Code Section Ten, Seven Fifty, that's where the remote storage ordinance lives, was not updated at that time. And if you drive by the mall currently, there is auto dealership storing vehicles there. So this is brought to our attention by Luther Volkswagen, and so we noticed this, and we thought we had to fix it. So I'm going to move quickly on this. So the map on the screen here shows where vehicles are currently to be stored at Virgil Center on the property. There's quite a few vehicles out there. Two sites, on the J.C. Penney Lot and this general area on the Sears site, and then there's a couple of other ones on this little exception parcel up here. So when we decided to take a look at this code updated to allow remote vehicle storage in the mixed-use district, we wanted to make sure that we update it to make it clear. The language that was done in two thousand fifteen was, is good, but we thought there's an opportunity to make it better and make it more, set more limits on there, more information. So it's easier to interpret. So there's a lot of clerical updates, and we also wanted to make sure we specifically identified the area where cars can be stored. The intent of the area is, the original approvals was to use the cars at underutilized sites to make them look kind of busy, they're vacant. So that was the original intent. But we wanted to limit it, because there's a lot of areas in the community that are zone mixed use. So we wanted to limit to the mall area for multiple reasons. I'll get into that here in a second. So I'm going to walk through the different sections that we updated. So the first one is Section A, which is the purpose statement. We update that to list mixed use in there. And then we also did some clerical revisions in there to better identify what the intent is. Section B is the definitions. So in Section B, we add definitions, and we also updated. We specifically updated the automobile dealership language to really specify it's for new cars only. The thing we talked about staff is, if new, if used car dealership, some of those cars are new to me, might not be new, new, but they're not new. So the intent is, so we want to put something in there about the registration entitled of the required non-registered, non-titled cars. So we put that language in there and also make it consistent with state statute. And also, we want to vary, that goes with the consumer vehicle. We want to really identify that's for consumer vehicles that are new or previously registered. Also want to note, too, the automobile dealership, we did revise that ordinance today as part of the updated language that came out at the advice of our city attorney. We want to specifically state the state statute that licenses, requires licenses for dealerships for new vehicles. So you have to have that type of license to be able to do this. Then we added definitions for excess parking. Got to explain what excess parking looks like, so I just can't say, here's my site, I got five spaces available. I want to park cars there? No, you have to have an ample amount. Then another part that came out of it, we want to make sure that these dealerships are located in Burnsville. We don't want other communities where the dealerships are loaded to locate their cars here. We want to make sure we're supporting the businesses that are located here in the community. So we added a definition today for primary business location. And then we had to add a definition for Burnsville Center. So we created a definition for Regional Shopping Center. And that's one of those definitions you'll see again as we update the zoning code. That'll be, you know, a lot of these codes, a lot of these words in here will be moved into the overall definitions as we go through that process. So we added a definition for Regional Shopping Center. Then under Section C, perma-required, we just kind of, that section was really big before, so we just merged it into one sentence in the subsection. And then in Section D, application materials, we want to submit, require, list out what is required. In the zoning code, it's nice to have those standards, so people know when they apply for these, they know what is expected. We want narrative, we want a site plan, we want, I don't remember what the other two were, two other things. But we just want to make sure that's clearly identified in ordinance, what the parameters are for the application. We have an online application portal right now. So the idea was previously, it listed all these different items, but everything's online now. So we really don't need to have that whole list of materials anymore, so we simplified that. And then we got the performance standards. And here, the main intent was, we kept the bones of it, but we added on to it. So the first thing we did is we added a standard, limiting the remote storage to the Regional Shopping Center, Virgil Center, and properties within three hundred and fifty feet of Regional Shopping Center. Again, we're looking for sites that have sufficient excess parking and in close proximity to the dealerships. The fear is that these could pop up all over the place, you know, a vacant building on our side of town, we saw something, no. We want to limit it to the areas close to dealerships for multiple reasons. It's good customer service for these businesses to be able to go get the cars from that site, bring them down there, not to travel all over the place, but keep it in a certain area. Also, over time, some of these sites might be redeveloping, so there's that opportunity. They may be underutilized now, but in the future, they may not be. And the other reason why I did this, I'm going to go back to the side of the map here, we wanted to keep the use south of forty-two. That was like our break line. We want to use forty-two as like the division, Highway Thirty-five W on the east side. On the west, we kind of go over a little bit on our side of Burnham, and there's some larger strip malls there that have some excess parking. We thought that could be an opportunity there. And then the former TGI Friday site is a site next to Volkswagen, and a couple other sites there. So we wanted to limit the area to a certain area of the community. All right. Sorry, let me go back to where I was. Another thing that came out today is revisions. We had to remove, in a published packet that came out, the published packet that came out earlier last Friday, there was a condition there requiring an occupied structure onsite. The intent behind it originally, the thought was, we want these, we don't want to be parked at vacant sites. However, we ran into an issue. Sears is vacant. And then there's a couple other parcels that aren't, they're vacant, that they're parking vehicles on. So we, and also had a little, a couple of enforcement issues with it. So after speaking with our city attorney, community development director, we decided to remove that condition. So now that, it's pretty much the same rules that are currently out there today. We're not, we can't limit it to an occupied site. And then we also added a standard prohibiting remote storage of used vehicles. That wasn't too clear in the current language. We want to make that clear that this is only for new cars. You can store your used ones on your site, and then you, this is only for new vehicles. Then we highlighted the approval process. The existing code was kind of silent on that, so we just kind of walked through what that process is. It is an administrative permit. However, if we ever have to revoke it, it does have to go through the City Council to revoke these. So we did add a standard on that. Section K talks about all the different policies and how we process or circumsist. We just, what we did, let me back up here. Section K, I just went and found what we do when we have the revol permit. I found another section, took the language from there, making sure it's consistent, so we don't have it a standalone area that's different from the rest of the code. So it's just kind of a, a lot of housekeeping. So the planning considerations for this, again, the B three zoning district allowed this use. We're just making it allowed in the mixed-use district. It's currently occurring out there. It's just a clerical kind of cleanup. At the same time, use this opportunity to kind of strengthen the language within the section. And we worked very closely with our city attorney on this, up to the last minute, obviously. So we, it was a good, good exercise, working with our attorney and trying to balance it out, you know, the wants and needs of the business community and what our desires are for the community aesthetically. So with that, the recommendations on the screen. I'm here for any questions, and go from there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the explanation, Mr. Maroslaw. And thank you for kind of catching this and kind of grinding through all the different aspects of, kind of making it consistent. And lastly, I want to say thank you for the effort to clarify and make the requirements clear to further applicants. So that's, I think that's great. Having said that, any questions for commissioners? Commissioner John?
So we talked about excess parking. We're talking above and beyond the minimum requirements as set forth by the parking ordinance that we put through.
That's correct, Commissioner John.
Okay. And so right now, the amount that are in the, it's the old Sears, the Seritage Lot, is not above and beyond? Is it because it's a vacant building, or?
It's because it is a vacant building, Commissioner. That's why they can, right now, they need that. In the event it becomes utilized again, they're going to have to figure out something else, somewhere else to park those vehicles, because that parking will be needed, depending on what that uses on the building. So that's something we will have to address. You know, if a permit comes in after the fact, or if we're working on a development application, that might be a reason for denial, saying that there's a development application here, the one that's going to be redeveloped here, the parking's going to be needed for X. So that's the intent.
And it goes back to that occupied building piece that you were just mentioning with the TGI Fridays or any other building that somebody could find and have vacant parking. Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hamilton, did you have a question?
Yeah, so with the pending construction, that the loop over to Burnsville, to Buck Hill Road, okay? And that may lead to some changes in the Cedars Building. So will the dealerships have to modify and adjust? Do they need to resubmit because they may have to shift their cars over?
Yes, Commissioner. We will have to require an amendment to their application showing where they're going to move those cars, so they're not impacted by that project. We will make them repay the fee if they have previously, but we will want to see where they're going to relocate them. And speaking with some of the dealerships in the area, the problem that these dealerships are running into is, since two thousand twenty or COVID, it's kind of, they, when they have inventory, if they accept inventory, they can have inventory. If they don't accept inventory, they're going to take those cars and give them to other dealerships. So that's why I see a lot of these car dealers taking on a lot of inventory, because if they don't take it from the dealership, they're not going to get those cars in the future and say, so-and-so's not using the inventory. This guy is. We're going to give those cars to that dealership instead. So it's kind of ebb and flow. So that's kind of the hope behind this, too, this permit, is that over time, these sites redevelop, and it's kind of works itself out, where there's not this demand where they have to have these cars stored off-site, where they can store them onsite, and they don't have this demand like they currently do.
Go ahead.
So, based on these changes and adjustments, is there any major impact on Walzer or Burnsville Toyota or the Luther dealerships? Does it really change their world that much?
Commissioner, no, it doesn't. This provides an opportunity to store more vehicles, more inventory for their customers and stuff like that, closer to the dealership where they kind of currently don't have the room onsite, so that's actually supports their business. The number one thing we heard from these dealerships when we worked through this is that when you go to buy a car, you have to wait twenty minutes to get a car that's offsite. You know, they're close proximity, so they can go get that car, bring it onsite quick. And also, as part of the zoning ordinance, we don't allow for sales to occur where the most storage is. That was a big part of it. That was a big part back in two thousand fifteen. They can't advertise, they can't do that as well. But we want them in a close proximity, so in the event someone does buy the car, the dealership can go get it over there and get it back to the site. And again, this is hopefully temporary. We'll hopefully see some redevelopment in these areas and will be a moot point. But at the current time, it's using the situation to our advantage or to their advantage as well.
Seeing no further questions, thank you, Mr. Maroslaw, for your presentation. We will open this up for a public hearing here at seven eighteen. And I do not believe anybody is, I don't have any message that anybody's online. There's, if there's anybody in the council chamber that would like to speak to this matter, you're welcome to approach the podium. Nobody's approaching the podium. And so we will close the public hearing here at seven eighteen. And is there any further discussion or a motion on this item? I, as the chair, cannot make the motion, so.
Just point that out, yeah.
Commissioner Timmerman?
This is one of the least exciting topics that I've had in front of the Planning Commission in the seven years I've been on it. I just will comment that there's a lot of parking stuff going on in Burnsville. I hope we see some broader development. I know that's not on you, that is on the market. But, yeah, I guess I'll move to approve.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motioned and seconded by Commissioner Hamilton. We'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries unanimously. This will also be before the City Council on July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Our next agenda item is updates, and I think I'm going to start with the update. I think the big update is that this is the final meeting for Commissioners John and Commissioner Timmerman. And I just want to thank you guys for your many years of service to the Planning Commission and let you know that, how much I appreciate your point of view. And, well, sometimes it may not seem like I do, but I actually really do appreciate that you have different, different way of looking at. but I actually really do appreciate that you have different, different way of looking at things and, and I really appreciate that. And also just to thank you for your kind of, your continued support and volunteering for the community. So, thank you both. Any other?
I also just want to kind of go off of that. I want to thank you too. When I started with the city, I spoke to our former planner, senior planner, Deb Gerros, and she said they have excellent planning commission and had nothing but kind words to say about everyone. But she also really enjoyed working with both you in her time here, and she said that on her last meeting. So I want to say thank you for your community, your service to your community. And I know the council will do a recognition event here in like August, I think it is. So I just want to say thank you again. It's been great working with you. Great questions, like the support of the, of the community and stuff. It's great. Thank you.
I guess I'll go first. It has been 13 years I've been doing this. I started on the Economic Development Commission as an alternate. Did six years there and six years here. And I have to tell you, I have enjoyed every minute of sitting behind this desk or going out to sites and visiting. And I enjoyed it so much that I actually made a run for council. And I think that there is something inside me that really appreciates doing this, and I really enjoy it. There are other projects that I'm currently working on and hopefully come to fruition that benefits the city. And hopefully, you know, that there's some future for me in some type of capacity, you know, with, with working either for the city, the county, or the state. I enjoy it and there's no getting around it. I really appreciate all the people that I've met in that timeframe. And when, when I first started, we were working on the 2040 comp plan. Now we're moving on to the 2050 comp plan, so it just, it ages you a little bit, right? But I really, really appreciate all the people that I've worked with, all the different points of view. Even you guys, even John Hamilton is, I really appreciate it.
I'm worried you'd be kicked underneath today.
Where you gonna do that to now? It's over with. So thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I want to thank the City Council for giving me the opportunity to do this. This has been a fantastic experience for me and I really appreciate you giving me a shot. And thank you.
Chair, thank you. He said all of the things that I had to write down, because I'm a little bit more concrete sequential than Commissioner John is. But I've been on the Planning Commission for seven years and I am just honored to have had this opportunity. Monday nights, I always look forward to. And that's why when we come in and say, God, we haven't seen you since April, it's a real heartbreak for me. So I, I really have enjoyed the time geeking out on planning and zoning. I think that, you know, some of the, the things that I've seen over the, the last seven years have been exciting. I mean, we've gone from having, you know, very few apartments in the, in the city and the ordinances were kind of loosened up to allow us to build more housing. Even market rate housing, so long as we build more of it, eventually can become affordable. So I think it is something that we need to continue investing in. I do want to just say that, you know, I, I'm so appreciative of the relationships and the friendships that I've made with commission members from the past, staff from the, the present and the past. It's been just an amazing, amazing experience. I want to just kind of close on something that's probably no surprise. I've always asked hard questions. I've always asked questions that, you know, take the opportunity, when we have an applicant in front of us, to get information and to seek truth. And that is my career. My career is around risk and mitigating risk and finding truth. I think that it's really important that the Planning Commission going forward monitor and take a close look at what's happening on the freeway dump and the freeway landfill. There's a lot of information that's being shared publicly through social media, through articles, and advertisements in the local newspaper, in the Minneapolis newspaper. And it is becoming a political hot button. And it shouldn't be. It is an environmental issue. And I think that potentially one of the last safeguards for mitigating risk related to the freeway dump and the freeway landfill is the Planning Commission. The City Council seems to have made up their mind. The business community seems to have made up their mind. And I truly, truly think that we need to protect the health and future of our citizens. City council members talked about, well, this is something we inherited. This, this dump was from the 60s, this is Bloomington's garbage, you know, whatever talking point that there is. I think we absolutely owe it to our children, our grandchildren, looking forward seven generations. To think about the impact of not remediating this landfill could do, being so close to our, our drinking water source. The best information that's out there is on MPCA's website describing the impacts and the risks. And in, you know, a career of risk identification, risk mitigation, I, I just, it, it drives me crazy that we're even considering building or allowing this parcel to be built out. So I want to leave with that, but I also want to, again, say thank you for letting me be a planning geek. I think that, you know, this is such interesting work, even when it's parking lot ordinances. I mean, I, I said that it's, you know, the, the least interesting topic that I've sat through in seven years and I still geeked out on it. Thank you for the fun and I'll watch you guys on Monday nights.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Are there other updates from, from commissioners? Updates from staff?
No, the other update is, since our last meeting in April, two of the applications did move through and got approved by the City Council. The first one was Ian Baptist Church. That was booed by City Council. We're actually looking at construction plans here shortly on that one. There we go on vertical. And then the other one was Howlandstown. That's the kennel, that's kind of going in at 12255 Nicollet Avenue South. That was also approved, and it's also in for building permit as well. Other than that, thank you both for your service again.
So our last agenda item is adjournment. Would either of you care to make a motion?
No, I'm gonna keep this going. We're here all night.
We've never filibustered a planning commission meeting.
This is it. Here we go.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Okay. And seconded by Commissioner John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.